Right, next is our mega statement that will be read by our student representative.
All students will graduate with knowledge, skills, attitudes, and behaviors necessary to achieve their personal goals and make a positive impact in the world.
And following that, of course, Addison, is your student representative report. What do you have for us this time?
Yes. Good evening, members of the board. I am pleased to present an oral summary of activities across our school district for the month of March. A more detailed written report will be available at the CFAUDS stakeholders in the public minutes and in the board's monthly newsletter under Board's considerations. So at the high school, the FBLA chapter organized and hosted the CHI-Book with seventy-five runners. HOSA, which stands for Health Occupations Students of America, hosted their annual blood drive and had forty students and staff donate. Playing sports are off to a great start, and freshmen and sophomores took their pre-ACTs. At Homestead, they are continuing to work through their conscious discipline implementa- implementation, excuse me. The students are doing great with the school-wide Read-a-thon. They celebrated with an all-school dance party. They will enjoy dress-up days in the near future, and students will start forward testing later this month. At Jim Falls in late February, families enjoyed an after-school family glow bingo night. Their monthly focus is determination, encouraging students to always do their best and persevere. Students are participating, are, excuse me, preparing for the forward tests in early April. And before break, they completed parent-teacher conferences. At Stillson, students logged over fifty-four thousand minutes in their Read-a-thon. Money raised is going to the Stillson PTO to help fund field trips and various community-building events. And as a reward, earning their goal, three staff members were slimed in an all-school assembly. And they are also getting ready for forward testing. In conclusion, our district is well-rested from break and ready to finish strong, because summer is in sight. Thank you for your time and attention. I would be happy to answer any further questions.
You're not gonna tell us about what's in front of you there?
Yeah. Last month, I missed a meeting because I was at the Grand Geneva, in Lake Geneva, Wisconsin, for DECA State. And I took this place and will be going to internationals at the end of April, which is in Orlando, Florida.
Congratulations.
So you're missing the next meeting?
Yeah, I am missing the April one.
Comfortable reading your statements now, so we're good. You shouldn't be nervous. He does a pretty good job.
I know. I was a little worried he might take my job.
It's the scholar. Just don't let him have the scholarship.
Did you happen to interview Ms. Rar about the sliming?
I did not.
It was a good video. It was a really good video.
I will have to see that.
It was warm, and it felt like applesauce, and it was blue.
I wore a shower cap. She did not.
I did not. I took one for the team.
Board members have any other questions? Alright, thank you, Ms. Simmer. Alright, next is a public comment. I see a couple of people have signed up, so we would ask that if you're gonna speak, we have a timer for three minutes to allow you to speak. And we ask that you give your name. Members of the district and employees of the district are allowed to speak here. We don't have people outside the district. And we also have rules on the total amount for each topic, but I don't think we have to worry about that number. I don't believe so. Alright, so we will start with Paula Downey. And again, please state your address. I know I have it here, but start by stating your address, and then go ahead.
Five oh-nine Goldsmith Street. Okay, I'm retired. And my two children graduated from here, so that's kind of cool. And they're both teachers. And so I've always kind of had a heart for that, and just seeing Chi-Hai going through the years and everything, and just a lot of different changes. And knowing that the young people now might be the ones that are taking care of me in the future, you know, gave me a greater heart to pray for them and to pray for you. So I just had a little prayer here that I was just gonna speak over y'all, okay? And then talk one other topic, okay? So I asked the Lord, I said, "You be at the helm of this school board. Lead each voice here righteously, having the best interest of each child in their Chippewa school district, to develop into a productive person in this society and to give them the wisdom and strategies to steer this district in the right direction." Psalm one twenty-seven one says, "Unless the Lord builds the house, the builder's labor in vain; and unless the Lord watches over the city, the guard's stand watch in vain." So we have a little prayer help that meets on Monday morning, and so we're watching over you all and praying for you and lifting you up, because I have a great respect for you and just the jobs that you have and what you're doing. So that was just the prayer part. And then the bathroom part, I guess I was just wondering, I know that the young girls, middle school and such, they are so conscious of their bodies, you know, and comparing themselves with others, and everybody develops the different parts and all. And then all of a sudden, you stick, you know, a male in there, how uncomfortable it must be for all of those girls, not to say maybe even in the locker room. So I guess I just brought that up for something that maybe you could consider in whatever decisions you make about who goes where and why and how. Okay, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Next up is Katie, I can't read the first letter, Kreese?
Kreis. You're so close. And tricky. Alright, hi, I am Katie Kreis. I live at six oh-one Squires Street. And the past week, I've had the opportunity to attend multiple events supporting our district, the first being the Boundaries meeting. While I have indeed filled out the feedback form for the committee, I felt like it was important to come talk to you face-to-face. Because I left that meeting with a lot of numbers and data that I know have been worked with tirelessly. However, I think it's important to put a face to who it's going to affect. While some on the Boundaries Committee may have students in the district, I know that many around the table don't have children in the district right now, and ultimately, you will have say in what happens. My daughters currently attend Hillcrest Elementary, a school that is very much on the chopping block. The West Hill has been a neighborhood for the large majority of my life. So when it was time to move back to Chippewa Falls, my family made a huge financial sacrifice and chose to purchase a home on the West Hill so that my daughter could attend Hillcrest Elementary, a very much neighborhood school. In two out of the three options proposed in the Boundary meeting, it completely split the neighborhood in half, which I'm sure you'll get to later if you haven't already. But it will no doubt have a rippling effect throughout the neighborhood and how it connects to one another. However, I don't just want to give you the community aspect. That's a big part of my heart. I know that numbers talk, and I personally have a lot of questions how we'll be able to pay for the boundary changes when we don't have extra money as it is. We need to think long-term about what is best for our buildings, the district, and our children. This whole process seems very rushed, considering we're now at the end of March. School will end in just two short months, and we're just finding out about the possibilities of what could happen. Mind you, these are, this takes time. We don't want to rush it. Finally, I was able to attend the gala on Saturday at Market on River to benefit the Hillcrest Playground. And I want to give a huge shout-out to the Hillcrest PTO, who put an incredible amount of work that they have done for the playground right over there. While I know some of you may have donated out of your personal finances, I was frustrated to see, to not see anyone at any level of the administration or other school board attend the gala or be a part of it. When they said that we were fundraising for a playground with no support from the district, I thought that was just gonna be zero money that was given by the district, which is still pretty awful. But you gotta show up in spaces to show that you care. You have to be there. So I was sad to see that opportunity missed. But I hope that those that represent our district can be present at those places, especially if we're looking to a referendum in the near future. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next is Daniel Bull.
Daniel Bull, I live at nine one-six Miles Street, right around the corner. I wasn't able to attend last month's meeting, but I wanted to talk about some of the actions or lack thereof of the staff up to the middle school when the intruder alarm accidentally went off. The, I brought my two middle school kids. I want them to be able to speak and tell you exactly what they went through and what they were feeling. But when the teachers aren't even present to help them, or if they're not there to help calm them down or kind of guide them in what to do. And it's not just the teacher's fault. It is up in the army. It used to be, there was no such thing as a bad soldier. It was a bad leader. Well, the soldiers are taught by leaders, so, you know, they always say shit goes down, but not up. But so that's, that's my point. It has to go higher than the, than the teachers. Something, something's wrong. But I want to defer the rest of my time to my kids, so they have enough time to say what they all feel.
Can you stop it? You're just, can you stop the going? Just, may I?
Yeah, they're both signed up.
Yeah, they're, they're both signed up under me or after me. Whatever, Rachel.
Yeah, okay, so thank you, Daniel. And next is Rachel. Just pause for one second.
I do have an idea based on just what you said, but I do want to hear the students first, you're gonna speak. But I have an idea. You and I need to connect.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have any dialogue. Just so that you guys know, we're not allowed to have any dialogue about any of these comments. This is the time where we, where we listen to you.
I just, I want you guys to be aware.
Yeah. Some of the things that, that go on or that have gone on.
You and, you and I will need to have further conversation later.
Alright, um, not, not to hurry up anything or whatever, but how long does the public art usually take, because they got homework to do? I'm not, I'm not trying to rush anybody.
Alright, next is Rachel Bull.
I live at nine one-six Miles Street, and during the intruder drill, I was going to the locker room, and then it went off, and nobody knew if it was a drill or not, and there was no teachers in the locker room. We did not know where the gym teachers were. There is two, one, well, there's three female gym teachers. One was in the health room, though. So there was two that could have been there, and they were not there. So we did not know where to go, because we've never had a drill during, when people were in the gym. So we ran to the stalls to try to hide in them, and nobody knew where to go, and we were all just confused. So then there was a girl who remembered that there is a back room. So we found, well, we went to there, and there was a camera in it. So if there was an intruder, they would, if they looked at the cameras, they would have knew where we were. And then we remembered that there was no gym teachers to lock the door. So one girl had to come out and close the door. I do not know if she barricaded it or anything. But we did not have the keys to lock any of the doors in there. And there was people holding the door shut, so then nobody could get in. And we didn't know what to do, so everybody was panicking, and they didn't know if it was real or not. Well, we assumed it was. And there was just a lot going on, so people started calling their parents and asking them if they'd be alright and saying goodbye. And then we found out eventually, after, I think, twenty minutes, maybe longer, I have no, maybe half an hour, we found out that it was a false alarm.
Did you say your friend called her mother at Parkview?
Yeah. There was one girl, since after the okay, we waited like ten minutes, and nobody was coming in the locker room to say it was okay to leave. So there was a girl, and she called her mother, who works at Parkview, I think. And her mom had to call one of the counselors to come let us out, because the gym teachers were not coming to let us out. We had no clue where they were. And so we got out, and the officers told us to stay in the locker room, and we were just waiting for the gym teachers, and we could not find him for a little bit. So we were just alone, and we had no clue what to do, and it was really confusing. And then everybody was panicking. There was, people were yelling at the cameras, because they were really freaking out, and a lot of people were crying. And then after the gym teachers, after we finally found them, and we were able, everybody went to the gym, and they said that they were sorry, and they did not know what to do during the drill when we were alone. So then we all went back to class. That's that.
Next is Joseph Ball.
So I live at nine one-six Miles Street, and I also go to middle school. When the alarm went off, it was like usual, we went to like the back corners of like the classroom. The teachers, they, they, we had two of them, they went right by us, but like behind another desk. Some kids were like talking, and we tried, we tried to ta- tell them to be quiet, like the drills, but the drill kept going on for like a little bit. I wasn't sure. I was thinking these thirty minutes, maybe. But anyways, the teachers, they were just on their, one of the teachers, they're just on their phone, trying to, we, we thought they were trying to figure out like what was happening, because they aren't really that long usually. And when the okay signal came out, still no one came. And we still also left out our bags, where if there was like a real person there, like they saw the bags, they can tell like we're there and they could get in. And it took us a long time, and every, the classes then just act like everything was normal.
I wanted him to say, because nobody, nobody was trying to calm them down or anything, or try to explain them what they should do or nothing like that. I know they have drills, but maybe, maybe every one, like once or twice a year, have an unannounced drill to really gauge on if people know what to do. That, that would be my suggestion. Have, have planned drills, but then have unannoun- one or two unannounced drills.
Only, so sometimes our superintendent likes to contact for information afterwards, but we, we can't. We have your address to contact you, correct?
That's what I needed to know, is that.
Yeah, that's.
And if I could ask your students to write all that down, write that, those reports to me.
Alright, next is Katie Bushman.
You are welcome to leave.
You can go now. Just write it down on a regular sheet of paper.
Absolutely, yes.
Titled in any way.
They can work on their penmanship and.
Well, we've been trying to work on his for a while.
You're pretty good.
Okay.
I may definitely want that documentation.
What was your name?
I will discuss further.
Jeff Holmes.
Okay, um, you want to give me a phone call or?
If you would, leave your phone number. We, we actually have all that information. We'll be able to track you down.
I've heard that one before. Alright, well, if it's not gonna last much longer, then we can.
It's gonna last a while.
Okay.
Thank you for.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Do your social studies homework first.
Hi, my name is Katie Bushman. I live at one zero zero three seven one hundred and thirtieth Avenue in Bloomer. But don't let that fool you. I am definitely a Chippewa girl. I teach for the district. I sub full-time pretty much at this point. I have kiddos at Hillcrest and at the middle school. And so I'm here to talk about the boundaries decision as well. I attended the last boundaries meeting. I was working my other job, so I wasn't able to attend the first one. And I will be honest, I fully expected to walk into that meeting and hear that our house out at the edge border of the district was on the chopping block. I had made peace with moving to Parkview at this point, because it is significantly closer to my home, and I sort of had in my mind that that is the direction this was headed. But I left that meeting, as Katie and several other parents and staff that I've talked to have stated, with a lot more questions, I think, than I had answers. Obviously, this is still a process that is very much up in the air. But I have a lot of concerns about being somebody who works at the three main schools that will be impacted. I frequently work at Hillcrest, Parkview, and at Southview. And all of the plans left me with concerns about implementation and how that will affect class sizes and educational quality. And I think my biggest issue that I'm concerned about right now is the fiduciary responsibility this board has to our stakeholders in the district. And with impending potential loss of federal funding, how this is going to play out long-term if we make any major changes. So two of the three plans that were rated at the top would require some significant financial investment, as well as potential additional hiring, which was made clear at the meeting, we don't have a lot of funds available, right? I would hate to see any of the buildings feel understaffed or over-pressured, especially when I know those cuts often come in the form of doubling up kiddos in special ed. I see it firsthand all the time. And so I would encourage our board in our upcoming meeting on April second, I believe, to consider a slow implementation or minor changes, because ultimately, the committee can recommend whatever they're going to recommend. But I just really wanted to come here and in person say, as somebody who has kids in the district and works in all of these buildings, I would like to see this have the most minimal impact on the quality of education that we can manage for the students at these schools. We are a little neighborhood school, and we are tight-knit, and to see anybody have to move is heartbreaking. But a huge change in a very quick amount of time would be so damaging to so many of our students. And it would frankly be very heartbreaking to see that happen. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. I think that concludes everybody that we have signed up here. So next is showcase of school under five point oh-one. We have Stillson Elementary School. Ms. Rar is gonna start with it.
Sure, this is on first. Alright, well, thank you so much for having us this evening to talk a little bit about some of the things that we've been working on at Stillson. I am Jenny Sarr, the principal, and I will let my colleagues introduce themselves as well. He's gonna move up this.
I'm Laura Tingey, first grade.
I'm Lydie Fisher, fifth grade.
Make sure I do this right. So we wanted to start, the topic tonight is about connectedness, and we wanted to start with a little bit of research. A lot of the quotes here are very similar, but basically, there's a lot of research that indicates that strong relationships with peers and teachers give students a reason to attend school, engage in their class, participate in extracurricular activities. Research also has linked strong student connections to school and their teachers with improved mental health, better attendance, better grades, less disruptive behavior, lower dropout rates. And then also, the last quote that I have is just, studies consistently show that increasing students' connectedness to school leads to those positive outcomes, kind of like we already mentioned. In the presentation, I did include a couple of other articles, if you want to read them. But there is a lot of research that does indicate that connection is important. Feeling like you're a valued member of school is important. It helps with, obviously, the, the students' learning, but also just that safety piece of it, too. Students feel safer when they feel cared about and when others care about their school. So school connectedness, what it means. I included a couple of things here. So connectedness is that belief held by students and adults that peers in their school care about them, that their staff care about them as well, and their well-being as individuals. Sense of belonging is feeling like you're part of a community, that your presence is valued. Positive relationships is having that supportive relationship between teachers, staff, and peers. And academic and social support, having resources and opportunities to succeed academically and socially. Why is it important? Some of the things we've mentioned in the previous quotes, or I mentioned in the previous quotes. But improved academic outcomes, students who feel connected are more likely to have higher grades, better attendance, stay in school longer. That well-being piece, that reduction in anxiety and stress, reduction in depression, improvement in that overall mental health. Increased engagement, students who feel connected are more likely to be engaged in learning, participating in school activities, feeling free to raise their hands, taking academic risks. You know, working on that, those peer-to-peer relationships, and as well as, you know, staff-to-peer relationships, and maybe getting out of their comfort zone. And better social skills. So positive relationships help students develop important skills such as communication, empathy, collaboration. And we've always felt that that's really important. Some ways that we can encourage connection among students, basically how to foster those connections, are create a positive school climate. This is by promoting that culture of respect, inclusivity, collaboration. Encouraging student involvement by providing opportunities for students to participate, extracurriculars, clubs, student government. I mean, this year, we've done some after-school book clubs and choir, and a lot of things that we are encouraging the takes, students to take on, so that they do have that connection to our school and to the staff that are there. Fostering open communication, encouraging our students to express their thoughts, their feelings, and staff listening actively to their concerns. And then providing opportunities for bonding, such as organizing activities that allow students to connect with each other, which is some of what you're going to hear in the upcoming slides, outside of their classrooms. So we do want strong connections within their classrooms, but we also want them within our school building, on the playground, in the halls, on the bus, whatever it might be. And then showing empathy, demonstrating that understanding and compassion for students' experiences, and making important connections. So goals. Look, this is the why. Stillson is a place where we have felt that commu- that connections between staff and students, peer-to-peer connections, are important. As many of us know, education has been challenging over the past couple of years, you know, COVID, all of those things have been very difficult. And, you know, we do surveys. The students do surveys, parents do surveys, staff do surveys. And some of the things that we found was just, while connection is strong, we've lost a little of what we had due to a lot of those things. And so we need to get that back. One of the things that I think, you know, just mentioned a little bit is stress is high day-to-day. And so some of the things that often fall by the wayside, when you have those other obligations you have to meet, or the increased achievement, or all of those other things you have to manage, some of those connections and activities are the things that go first, and we realize we can't do that. So finding time to connect brings a lot of positivity, positivity to our building, a sense of family, security, safety in our school. This year, we looked at some of the surveys and the scorecard items that we had, and we decided we really wanted to work on reestablishing, reestablishing that positive climate through the connection opportunities for staff and students. And then also with conscious discipline. I think it came up in the student report, but that's one of those things that we're working on as a district. And we dabbled here and there for the last couple of years, and we're moving kind of full-speed ahead next year with conscious discipline. But one of the pieces is that school family. And so we really want students to feel that when they come to Stillson, that they are a part of our school and our class family. They are, they belong, they are valued, and that leads to that greater feeling of safety and desire to come to school. Okay, yeah. Alright, so I'm gonna now tell you what we actually have done to make sure that we have all those student connections. And so we've been really intentional about two specific activities, and the one I'm gonna talk about is called Happy Hives, where the Stillson stingers, so, highs, get it? Okay. So it's called Happy Hives, and what it is, is that the students are grouped by different grade levels with different staff members. So I'm a first-grade teacher. I have kids from kindergarten first, second, third, all the way up through fifth. And obviously, I'm not their teacher for all of it. So we're gonna group together. And those groups will stay the same as they move through elementary school. When kindergartners come in and fifth graders go out, then we change that way. So they have that connection throughout all those years, seeing me in the hallway, "Oh, you're in my hive," those kind of things, and we have that connection together. The groups work on different activities together, but also working on just building that community. We try to do it two times a month when we can, but the students are always asking, "When do we get to do Happy Hives again?" So I'll give you an idea of what one of those meetings looks like. So it takes a lot to get three hundred and forty students to move through the school in about three minutes and get to their happy hive with their teacher in kindergarten. Where do I go? Those kind of things. So that, that is a big thing in itself. But once we get to each other. But once we get to each other, then we do some kind of icebreaker activity, like come in the middle of the circle if you've eaten sushi, come in the middle of the circle if you've been on a plane, things like that. So we're learning about each other, similarities, differences, what people like to do, even a fifth grader down to a kindergartner, those kind of things. And then we just chit chat a little bit, too, with each other. If you know something about someone who's in a sport, something like, people are chatting with each other. And then we move into an actual activity that we do together. So some of the ones we've worked on, we're trying to show the kids that we are part of a larger community than just our Stilson school family. So one of the things we did was we decorated those sleeves that go on coffee cups for 4:30 a.m. coffee. And so the kids did messages, positive messages, and drawings, things like that. So if you go there and you get a coffee and you go, oh, hopefully, it brightens your day, and the kids know that they're doing something for someone else outside of our school family that we have. Another one that we did was Meals on Wheels Bags for Them. Well, first of all, we had to explain to kids, what is Meals on Wheels? Because some kids have not heard of that before, didn't understand the fact that some people don't just have food that they can make on their own. So we explained that to them. And then we decorated the bags for that, too, just to bring smiles to their faces as well when they receive their meals during the day. So that was another one of the Happy Hives activities that we've done. We've also done a more school-family activity where we made a, well, I would call it an abstract quilt. It was not connected in a quilt at all after working together. So each group, each student got like a three-by-three square, and they got to decorate it however they wanted, that expressed themselves. And then we put all of them on like fishing lines, so they kind of looked like they were hanging by themselves. But then we put all of those together in an abstract quilt where people could see when they walked by. And the kids were always looking for their own, you know, or looking for someone in their hive, those kind of things. So that kind of brought some community as they walked to lunch or fayad, it was in our main hallway there. And then when we did this year, also on Valentine's Day, we got together in groups and we made, did a STEM activity with putting marshmallows and toothpicks, see who could make the tallest tower, working with their team. And conscious discipline has something called Joy Juice. So we just do activities to feel good inside. So there wasn't really much academic in that, but it was just fun for them to be together, working together, laughing, giggling, sneaking marshmallows when they weren't supposed to, those kind of things. But building that community together and kids feeling connected to other kids other than ones just in their class family. So we have a couple photos to show from that. See, there's a lot of marshmallows there to start. So we have the marshmallows, there's our abstract quilt. See, it doesn't look like a quilt. And that was the goal. And then our sleeves there, some other kids working together with their buddies, making their Meals on Wheels bags, so some from last year and this year. And here's a couple others of kids just smiling, enjoying each other's company. And we want to raise good humans, not just kids who know a lot of stuff, but also good humans. So that's what we're working on in our Happy Hives. Here's, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I do have to ask a question. So Principal Sarar is not like Principal Trenchball?
Not at all. Her son was even smiling in that one.
He also ate the most marshmallows, as I found out.
Philosophy, right?
He does not, and she has a group, too. So it's all staff members have kids.
If you're having fun, you're not learning?
You believe in fun and learning.
Yes, yes, yes. And then we had a couple student testimonials, too. I just like that we can do an activity every time, and I like that I get to bring a friend with me, because like in mine, two first graders from my class go together, so they do have someone else that they know. And I like that there is a teacher to help us. And they're fun, because we play games and have teamwork, and the fourth and fifth graders can teach us, things like that. And now she's going to talk about our next activity that we've been working on.
So prior to COVID, we had Book Buddies. And Book Buddies were where we had a, like a lower and upper classroom get together and read once a month, or actually, I think back in the day, it was probably close to weekly, that we would meet with our Book Buddies. And then COVID happened, and that was something that had to go away. So we decided to bring that back. And we don't call it Book Buddies, we call it Classroom Buddies, because it's at the teacher's discretion, or the teacher-pair discretion, so like I'm with a second-grade teacher, on what we are going to do. So the Hives is a K-5 collaborative community where Classroom Buddies are like two grades again, it's like second and fifth grade. So we try at least 15 minutes a month. We often do a little bit more than that, but this is primarily educational in the sense, so like with the Read-A-Thon, you know, we were able to get together and read for that one. But another time, it might be that the second graders need help with this reading project, so the fifth graders come down and mentor or make sure they put it together correctly. So a lot of us really love it, the kids love that, too. So not only do they have a Hive teacher and a Hive group, they now have a Book Buddy that they can look for and enjoy, like with celebrations and such. So the example we have was the all-school bingo. If you can imagine, kindergartners trying to play bingo, it's a little bit chaotic. So they had their third-grade buddies, I believe it's kindergarten, third grade, had their third-grade buddies go with them to help them play the bingo cards. So we had a whole-school bingo, but they were with their partners to help support that, so. And I don't know which button it is.
It's just the right button. Yep.
So here are some pictures. So we did, fifth grade did a roll of Jack-o'-lantern with their Book Buddy, one of the grades did, made bracelets, you know, Book Buddy bracelets or Classroom Buddy bracelets, and then the all-school bingo in there, too. And then I'm guessing cards of some sort, I can't remember, it's Valentine's Day, be another pink, cards with their Book Buddies, too. So like Veterans Day would be another time that they'd get, we'd get together with our Classroom Buddy, and the fifth graders would help the younger spell the words correctly and make sure that they stayed on task. And sometimes the second graders made sure the fifth graders stayed on task, depending. So Callie said, I'm going to go this way, I love it because I love to read to the little kids and go back to my classroom. I feel like I get to be in first grade again. And the furniture is huge to them, because like the fifth-grade furniture is so big and the kindergarten furniture is so small, so they enjoy that part, too. I like to read stories with my buddies, I like getting to know other kids and teachers, I enjoy reading to the younger kids, it helps me be a better reader and helps them become better readers, too. And I get to socialize with kids I don't normally see, so. And they've, again, like just being together, so. Then we realized, too, that staff connection is just as important. Our day-to-day is literally from 7:15 or earlier all the way to 3:15 with very little time for any sort of break. So we've added in some different staff-connected activities. One was Honey in the Hives. Well, we have a Honey in the Hive, I guess, do we have both, kind of called the same? Where we fill out postcards for each other to like just say, hey, thank you for doing this for me, or hey, I noticed you did this, just to give that positive. So, you know, every couple weeks, we end up with a postcard from a random staff member. And it might be someone that we haven't seen, you know, like regularly, but they notice something in the hall about us. So just like we nominate students for things, as staff, we want to point out the positives that each other is doing and that we notice. We do every month a pod gathering, so each one of our areas of the school pick up a month and a celebration of some sorts. We have just from 2:45 to 3:15, a kind of a mini-social, where snacks and drinks and all of that to come down and just kind of, again, to get out of your room and get to see each other, you know, different themes and such with that. We did a bunch of different clubs this year. We actually had our Welcome Back, we came up with several different groups and we went around and signed it, signed papers. So we have a Foodies Club that we give recipes roughly once a month, the Fantasy Football Team, the Bookish Banter, we meet about every two months, we read a book and then come together, and, you know, we enjoy each other's company and talk about the book a little. And as well as other just different get-togethers outside of school, like paddleboarding and kayaking in the summer or bike rides. We just see who's available on such a date and get together. One of our newer ones was Undercover Dress-Up Week, you may have seen that on social media, but where we pick a theme and everybody dresses up like that theme to just see how long it takes the kids to notice. Usually on Monday, it's not something very noticeable, but then by Friday of the week, the last time that we did it was inflatables, so like I brought in a ginormous ducky, and we just walked around with our inflatables during the day. You know, so from wearing the same color shirt or having two different shoes, just again, just so that the kids can see that staff are wanting to have fun and we get along well and we do enjoy each other's company, too. Two other things, one was a turkey scavenger hunt that just went on for three days, maybe, a couple days, where we had to hit a turkey in the school. There was always a staff, though, in like possession, per se, of it, and then it had to transport among the school. And we had teams, and whoever had the turkey at a select time, but it was an unknown time, won. So that brought people out of their classrooms, walking around going, oh, I'm just checking to see what you have hanging up in here, you know, looking for that hidden turkey, which I had for a really long time and then got busted by Amy, for the matter. And then the one we did last week was a rock-paper-scissors challenge, and that just went for a day, and everybody got the opportunity to play paper-rock-scissors, and whoever won the most games by the end of, well, it wasn't really the one the most, because it was whoever, when you played, you had a necklace, and if you lost, you lost your necklace, and if you won, you got the other person's, all of their necklaces. And whoever had the most necklaces at the end of the day won a prize, and then any extra buy-ins for that. So that was, that was a lot of fun.
And we're screaming.
We're so excited about this.
Or teacher won, or stole somebody's beads.
Was that a?
Yeah. Yeah, that wasn't, because that was behind.
Yes.
Was that a licensed service turkey?
It was a little stuffed animal turkey that actually was from a staff get-together probably 15 years ago as a white elephant gift, because it didn't have a leg. So I just brought it, brought it back.
Clarification.
Not a live one.
So, and like with carrying the turkey, it had to be seen, so you would like sit there and watch, oh, they're walking that way. I saw, wait, wait. Yes. We had to add some rules from last year, because the kids got so involved last year, they started wanting to chase for the turkey, and we're like, oh, no, it's just a teaching game. So it's just fun to see the staff also get out there and the kids and the joy, although I am concerned, because I did take all the beads from a second-grade teacher, and I think that class might not like me as much anymore, so. Anyway. Well, thank you for hearing us, and thank you for understanding the importance of the connectivity in this school for all of our Stilson kids and staff. And if you have any questions?
I guess I have a comment. So one of the blessings of being old and retired, Jasper and Peggy know that we could go walk in our elementary schools. And it amazes me how much ownership administrative principals and the staff and the parents have ownership in each of their individual schools, and to each one of them, their schools are the best. And I appreciate that ownership, because that's what makes that school. And so, you know, it's a credit to you guys, and, you know, you Stilson folks obviously have passion and stuff, and I understand why. And it really is appreciated that that ownership, even though we have one high school and one middle school, everybody adds their little niche, too. So thank you.
I'd like to just say that Steve is old, Peg and I are retired.
You can keep trying to bring you in, though. Hey, Mr. Traubridge said I'm in the young category.
For the record, your grandkids count, too, so I have multiple grandkids in the district.
Yeah. Thanks, you guys. And we also know that when kids are connected, good things generally happen, you know, and some kids don't know how to connect, so they need that help and support. So thank you.
And thank you to both board members for doing that. That was, I had a comment and an ask. The comment would be that I echo your sentiments in that regard, and also appreciate, greatly appreciate you bringing this to the board tonight. It also reflects what's going on throughout all of our elementary schools. It's not just singular to Stilson. There's been a lot of conscious effort throughout the district over the past several years to have similar activities going on in all the buildings. I've been fortunate enough to be able to see those things in action in at least three, at last, five years, it's going on five years now, particularly since I started being able to, Angela and Peggy were able to carve out time for me to get into the schools and see those things. And it is fantastic to see. Those things are extremely important to our kids, and it's greatly appreciated. My ask is that would you please share those pictures with Kathy Strecker? We have some upcoming PR things that those photos would be great for.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you all for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next is 6.01, which is OE4, Treatment of Stakeholders. Members of the board have received the CEO's monitoring report on OE4, Treatment of Stakeholders. It is now the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of compliance in this area. Superintendent Holmes?
Yes, I have developed this monitoring report for your review. At this time, I will provide a quick overview of it. The board was, already provided that report in their board packet and had the opportunity to peruse it. And I am pleased to report that Chippewa Falls Area Unified School District is in full compliance with all indicators of OE4. Treatment of Stakeholders, as demonstrated by the evidence provided throughout the monitoring document, board members were provided with new indicators as indicated in the report. The district has effectively maintained confidentiality of information, handled complaints appropriately, and fostered an organizational culture that values stakeholder input through multiple feedback mechanisms, including surveys, community forums, and direct communication channels. Particular strengths within this include the proactive approach by our new HR director in updating the employee handbook and the implementation of new processes to better address difficult employee situations. At this time, I ask for the board's acceptance of the monitoring report.
Board members, any questions relating to the acceptance of the report? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to accept this report as our own so that we can further discuss it and hold on inappropriately.
So moved.
You've got to read the operational expectation. No, no. Motion by, motion by fear to accept OE4, Treatment of Stakeholders as our own report. Is that right?
Yep.
Yes. Good.
Second.
Second by Olson, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is now our report to discuss further. Do board members have any particular questions for Superintendent Holmes before we decide, using our operational expectation language, whether to find the district in compliance, not in compliance, or in compliance with those exceptions? There are no questions, I would look for a motion.
Accept the monitoring report, OE4, Treatment of Stakeholders as presented.
And then?
Next one, sorry, get me all flustered up. That the district is in compliance with monitoring report, OE4.
Motion by fear, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Martino, any further discussion?
Thanks.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, the district finds the board to be in compliance with OE4, Treatment of Stakeholders. Good timing for your computer to wall, since we have no questions. All right, so we survived OE4. I'll give you a little time to get that up if we need to, but most of this stuff should be fine here.
Okay.
All right. Board consent agenda, is there a request by any board member for the removal of any item for separate consideration from the board's consent agenda? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve the board's consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Martino, is there a second?
Second.
Second by fear, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the board's consent agenda is approved as presented. Next is the superintendent's consent agenda. I don't think we have anything in there, so you can't really remove the removal. So the superintendent's consent, I don't believe, needs to be approved at all, correct? There's nothing in there.
Correct.
All right. Matters reserved for board action, no items have been removed from the board's consent agenda, there were no items in the superintendent's consent agenda. So we're down to 9.03, which is consideration of compensation, scale, district services, school nurses, OTs, PTs, SLPs, school psychs, and co-curriculars pursuant to OE5. Mr. Neuer.
Thank you. So what you're going to see tonight is not much different from what you've seen in the past two months regarding our, my recommendation, I guess, for compensation for the groups that President Check just read off to you, because we are studying those groups this year. We've been in this work since November, and we're at the final recommendation for board action tonight for those groups. So again, you saw this last month and the month before, there have not been any significant adjustments. We've looked and placed people based on, again, making sure everyone would be moved on the current scale, and then moved again for that increase in compensation on the new scale. scale, the next step that would give the increase, which is the current approved process. I did include in the next slide a side-by-side comparison just to highlight that we did have some conversation between using the fifty-first percentile and the sixty-first as our median. But again, going back to what our current approved process is by our board and in conversation with our group, I am making the recommendation that we move forward with also co-curricular costs. I have shared that in this committee, they are suggesting or recommending along with me, a two percent increase to each of our current co-curricular assignments that we have or positions. And that would put everybody, give everyone a two percent increase in every position for next year. You'll see that total increased cost of about twenty-three thousand dollars with that two percent increase with all of the opportunities we're able to provide for our students. And then again, the recommendation of the subcommittee to move the co-curricular study to the same rotation as certified staff because there is a desire to link co-curricular compensation to the base salary of our certified staff. Again, we'll get more into that next month about kind of how that all lays out. But for next year, the co-curricular in our study and making us as competitive as we can be at this point in time with our information, a two percent increase. That takes me to this slide, which is the recommendation for these different groups. The increase using the fifty-first percentile as our median to help set our base and then the scales for each of those individuals and those subgroups, along with the co-curriculars. So you can see that the total increase from what it would be if everything stayed with our status quo approved compensation scales, it would be an increase of around one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Supposed to be, so questions, clarifications that are needed around the recommendation?
I think there was some discussion last month about the co-curriculars essentially being part of that step. Are you thinking that that's going to be joined in at the, in the next year or when, when would that discussion start?
So it, so certified staff is on rotation for next year. So we would revisit the co-curricular or Schedule C and with the intent of we, we think that we will be competitive if we use our new base salary and tie our base salary to the different positions. However, part of that study will also be getting our comparables and assuring that if that doesn't make us competitive with our comparables, that we may need to go back and have a, go to a different approach. But the conversation with the group is that they felt that if we moved or increased the certified scale next year at base, that that would give an increase to all of the current positions. And then we would talk about how we would look to stay competitive for the next three years until compensation is studied again for certified staff and co-curriculars if our new process is approved.
I just want to make sure I'm hearing that right. So two percent this year, it's going to be looked at next year to make it competitive.
To compare to our potential new comparables, yes, and make sure that it aligns and keeps us competitive.
Because it's going to be based on the base salary, right? And so you'd have to get that figured out before you would be able to move on with the model that they would like to pursue.
So do you have a framework where you place the different co-curriculars? I mean, if you're gonna, are you gonna base it on the base rate, hourly rate or?
No. So currently what we have done is we've done the work on figuring out what percentage of our current base rate for teacher pay is, which is the forty-three thousand dollars. And so our intent would be to apply that same percentage of base to the new base salary for teachers, which would, again, I'm making an assumption that our, our base would increase based on our study, which would mean that then all of our Schedule C positions would increase as well. However, I just want to be clear that if that doesn't make us competitive with our comparables, then, then we need to have another conversation. But that will allow us, because if our comparables change with our new recommendation, which they are different from what they currently are, we wanted to have the most up-to-date information for those groups. So making a change this year because those people in those Schedule C have not experienced a change in compensation for a handful of years, wanting to recognize that, yes, this was your rotation. We did, we did study with the information and data we got back. It is fairly, it's comparable as we can be, as competitive as we can be with a two percent increase, but we want to come back to it with our new comparables next year. And again, with the intention of tying it to our base salary, which is what we're seeing a lot of, seeing some of our comparables do. Our base salary right now is slightly below what some of our comparables' base salaries are.
Just, just to be clear on that, let's say I just picked one out, gymnastics head coach.
Yep.
Are you saying that gymnastics head coach has a, it's a certain percentage of the base salary? So when the base salary of the teacher goes up, that salary is going to go up? Or are you saying that we're actually going to do a study and look around and see what other gymnastics coaches are paid so we can remain competitive in that particular field?
Yes. So we want to run the numbers.
Answer a yes to that question.
So our, our thought, our thought is that by tying it to base, because again, some of, some, I won't say all or many because I don't have an exact number, but there are comparables that use their base salary to set what their co-curricular pay is. So we are hypothesizing that that will put us in a competitive light if we move to that structure for Schedule C. However, we want to also make sure that that's not where it stops. We want to compare to our comparables to see, are we still within plus or minus, I'm making up a number, five hundred dollars of the gymnastics head coach for, on average for comparables? Yep, we are, we're competitive. We feel okay about being able to move forward.
That makes sense. Board members have other questions? Let's see. That's matters reserved for board action. It's just information and discussion, right? No actions?
The attachment on the bottom, she has the recommendation that she is proposing in there.
Okay. So the administrative recommendation, as I understand it, is to accept the recommended updated pay scale increases in district services, physical therapists, occupational therapists, speech and language pathologists, school psychologists, school nurse positions, and Schedule C using the fifty-first percentile to set our midpoint. Would anybody like to make such a motion?
Motion to accept?
Motion by Martino. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Olson. Any further discussion? Given the money involved in this, I think we should do a roll call.
Dan Martino?
Aye.
Steve Olson?
Aye.
Dennis Fear?
Aye.
Sherry Jasper?
Aye.
Sharon McCallum?
Aye.
Wigan McCallum?
Aye.
Lee Check?
Aye. All right. Motion carries. That has been approved. Thank you, Mr. Nure, not only for your presentation tonight, but all the work that went into this behind the scenes. Thank you. Next is communicating with the board, ten point oh one, preliminary budget and staffing plan. Is going to start with Mr. Trowbridge and also include Mr.
Actually, I'm gonna, she's on a roll.
So I'm not sure if you can, I don't know. Maybe if you could, and I think you all have access to the preliminary staffing plan. I, I hope that the new format was acceptable. It's a little bit different, but includes the same information. I tried to just condense it and organize it a little bit differently. So I think that because you've had time to see it and review it, I'll jump to the very end, which has the overall proposals of increases and decreases. Thanks, Angela. But you will see above each school. Angela, would you go to just like, keep scrolling down? And on the links, like two more pages? You go to the links and just pick a department or school off, yep, any of those. Stillson. All right. So if you go to the top of that next page where you'll, other way, just use it, know the format, you can see that the staffing plan at Jim Falls had no changes. So I tried to note pluses or minuses or no, no neutral changes at the top of each one. But the very last two pages is kind of the, the larger overview. So you can see that currently in this preliminary staffing plan, none of this is finalized and no action tonight, but just to show you the needs that are being seen in our school on page sixty-four would show that we would have an overall increase of sixteen point nine eight positions going into the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And then if you were to go to the, the next page, it's broken down by hourly and certified staff and Schedule C. And then on page sixty-six are the decreases. And you can see that overall would be a decrease of eight point nine four. So how that works out in my head is, for instance, at Stillson, they have some movement of teachers, an increase at one grade level, a decrease at another. So that evens out when we subtract the decrease from the increases. So again, overall increase of eight point nine four FTEs or about eight hundred fifteen thousand dollars hourly and certified. And taking that away from the sixteen point nine eight FTEs, had about one point four million of an increase. So still looking at needing to do some work with our, our leaders around decreasing to get to a staffing neutral or staffing reduction overall.
Say that last part again. You're talking about increasing, but also reducing.
Yep. So there have been increases requested in the staffing plan and they're represented in the green. And there's also been decreases requested in our staffing plan, which are the red. So I'm gonna work with even numbers and call it seventeen of an increase and nine of a decrease. So we still have eight positions that we need to talk through and in work, work through to get us back to neutral or, or into a staffing decrease for this staffing plan.
And may I add that part of that discussion relies on the outcome of the EBRCE's work and their recommendation to the board surrounding elementary.
We met today as elementary principals to do some problem solving and some preliminary planning will come and reconvene after the meeting on April second to make some final decisions. We just wanted to be transparent about the needs that our leaders are seeing for our students in our district and in showing those to you. And then you have the rationale for the requests of increase and decrease throughout the document.
Yep. I appreciate that. When I first started looking at it, I became confused pretty fast, but I traveled a lot yesterday and got home late. So, but like, I'll pick on Homestead because it's the first one. So when I looked at the pupil count report from January, it shows that we have three sections of kindergarten. But then when I look at the staffing, it just says two. It's not showing a negative.
So for Homestead kindergarten and for Hillcrest second grade, those two positions we added were not part of the twenty-four, twenty-five staffing plan. So they were not rolled over into being neutral if those positions stayed because they were not part of the approved staffing plan for twenty-four, twenty-five. So that's why you still see two kindergarten positions at Homestead because there are only two kindergarten positions in the staffing plan that was approved. And then for Hillcrest, for example, you should only see, checking, two second grade positions.
Yep.
Because there were only two second grade positions approved in the staffing plan. And we were working to say staffing neutral to what had been approved in the staffing plan for twenty-four, twenty-five, not with the additions that were made in August.
So they're LTE. My, when I look at this, I'm thinking it's a public report. So a public person trying to look at this was kind of where I was coming from.
So on April second, we're meeting on this again?
No.
No, that's just the EBRC. Okay.
Elementary attendance panel.
So this is for the what?
April twenty-eighth.
Okay. I was gonna say that'd be a quick.
So would more narrative be helpful in the explanation when those types of situations occur, do you think?
Yeah, I, you know, I wasn't, or you know, at the bottom where you have twenty-four, twenty-five, and you have like fifty-one students in kindergarten. I don't know if maybe parentheses, if you have three sections and then, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six is two, I don't know. It's just.
It's another way to see how it.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Your general public isn't going to understand the LTE and not part of that staffing plan and.
How, or I should say, to what degree will the staffing plan and the financial aspect of that be a part of the presentation on the second? So, you know, we're kind of, you know, here a presentation on what we think we should do about the boundaries. Can we expect some, some information on how we expect that also then on the second? I know it's kind of quick. Can we kind of, will we see some justification on how we expect that to change the staffing plan, assuming any one of those proposed options would take effect?
And, and yes, absolutely. Whatever the recommendation is at that time, we'll include a financial analysis. Some are neutral, some have a little bit of additional cost, some have some costs that might be a little bit hard to predict yet at this point. But it was important for us to have that meeting, you know, if not before tonight's meeting, certainly between now and the April twenty-eighth meeting so that we can build whatever decision comes out of that into that final result.
Perfect.
You're gonna get a lot of information on April second. Bringing my calculator with me. All right. Board members, have any questions on the staffing plan? If not, I'll have some questions. Good? Okay. Otherwise, we'll go to Mr. Trowbridge on the preliminary budget.
Sure.
Angela, if you'd want to pull that one up too, it'd be great. Thank you and thank you, Mr. Nure. Obviously, we work very close together on these two things because the work that her and her group does definitely has a pretty significant impact on the work that goes into our preliminary budget. So I wrote down joy juice and I really appreciate that because there's joy juice and process here, not maybe in the final result yet at this point, but we'll get there. So first, I want to go over the format. All these items are in, in the packet. Angela's actually still loading that. Just give me an indication along the way if we need to stop for questions along the way. But I'll, I'll try to kind of systematically go through what's included in your packet. First, we have a staffing and budget timeline on your first page. That's really our roadmap for this process and how we bring it all together. Kind of keeps our timelines tidy. It is something that was shared with you at the December board meeting. Next, we have our revenue limit analysis. This is from our budget forecast model. This is trend data about projected enrollment and revenue limits. I'll let Angela catch up here. Just a piece of output that you would have seen in November. Next, we have our third Friday pupil count. So we're, we're trying to, trying to blend these two. Next, we have our third Friday pupil count, so we're we're trying to trying to blend these two formats without telling you in both of the proposals. Um this helps us with staffing, uh it's probably more for class size, uh but it helps us identify hotspots, low spots. It really is just an important tool for us in terms of planning. Uh next section, page four, is our strategic plan on a page. What this does for us is it helps us frame our budget, uh to make sure that we're aligning our resources with our strategic plan pillars. And and amazingly, we're just over the midpoint on a three-year strategic plan, which I'm not sure where the last twenty months went, but uh it won't be long, we'll be working on the next generation of this plan. Uh page five is our zero-based budgeting process, um this is a process that we've used for quite a few years now at the building and department level. What it helps with is ensuring that there's alignment with our needs, priorities and all of our strategic plan pillars, so. It's not perfect, uh but I do feel it is a good framework for us to use for buildings and departments. Uh page six, we have some output from our budget forecasting model, it helps guide, uh in my mind, where revenue and expenses. Where those totals should be, uh when we get to the end of this process, should be at at either at least near or in the ballpark uh with where we're planning here. Next, we have our revenue limit worksheet, uh probably the the first line of work that I do uh when it comes to budget development. Uh so this is the basis for all of our general fund revenue, it's factors of enrollment, uh which you see in right side of the worksheet, line six. Property values in the lower left-hand corner, state aid, right side of the worksheet, line twelve A. And then property taxes, uh the lower right, uh line sixteen. Next, uh several years ago, we started including our our budget adoption and preliminary bu- budget adoption formats. We just felt it's it's helpful to have that be consistent as we move through this process. Uh so this this adoption format is really a more straightforward kind of simplified format of our budget. Uh it includes uh the prior year's audited figures, what our current year budget is, what our preliminary budget is for, in this case, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So it's listed by general revenue and expense function and all those categories by individual fund, and I like to refer to this as a kind of a ten-thousand-foot view of our budget. Next section, uh pages twelve and thirteen, we have our budget publication format. This is the same format that we would publish in the fall as we get ready for our budget hearing. Revenue, this shows you revenue and expense categories by fund, a little higher level view, maybe thirty thousand foot, uh just a quick snapshot of our total finances. We do have some more granular reports for you, uh starting with the executive expenditure summary, pages fourteen through twenty. This is really kind of similar to that budget adoption format, um but it's something that the board sees on a monthly basis as part of your reporting package. I just feel it's important to include this uh just for consistency, it lists our expenses by type and by function or purpose. Uh just now includes the preliminary budget as part of it as well. Uh pages twenty-one through thirty, executive revenue summary, also similar to that budget adoption format. It lists revenues by source and function or type, also part of your monthly reporting package, again, just now includes the preliminary budget. Then if you want to dig deeper, uh pages thirty-one to sixty-seven is our school board summary by object, this is formatted by fund first. And then revenues show up first, followed by expenditures, all funds are included in this, so again, it's more granular. If you're looking to dig into some specific types of revenues or expenses, this is the the report that kind of helps get you there. Well, just some kind of anecdotal data here about our preliminary budget, uh some things that it provides for. Obviously, in the middle of our strategic plan, uh heading into year three, it's important that we have resources for our student success. During culture, our people and finance facility and operations pillars, uh it's important to our work because of what we refer to as our cascade. So it does cascade from the district scorecard down to our pillar scorecards, apartments and buildings as well, so it is. Wide cast across all of our facilities and operations, uh it includes money for the strategic plan. Uh we'll be coming back and aligning that with available resources uh at the April meeting. Money for technology sustainability, some of our communication efforts and public relations. Our curriculum initiatives and replacement cycle, uh money for professional de- development for our staff, uh for them to continue their le- learning and growth as well. Primarily for academic success, uh the biggest pillar with the most amount of money in it, uh we have had some good gains in growth post-pandemic and we do. Look forward to those continuing uh into the future. Money for educator effectiveness, uh support for our your results policies and operational expectations, that also is another way for us to check for alignment. Uh between policy, regulation, coherent governance and also our strategic plan. And then some maintenance projects that support our five-year capital plan and master facility study, we can just have that newly updated. The January meeting, I was forgetting what month that was, but our annual required contribution for OPEB, OPEV, excuse me. Uh assumptions for salaries, fringes, CPI adjustments, uh and compensation study that you just approved. I balled a spot for that, obviously, uh and then uh we're at the end of our ESAR funding. Um and really, which is what that means for us is that the final year of expense was now and it was in the early part of July. Uh so that's money that that we won't see in future years and have reflected that uh in our planning. So just to touch base quick on some of the fund highlights, uh fund tenor, general fund is over budget by just under five hundred thousand. It's about what we expected uh at this point in time, as Mr. Nor mentioned, our staffing plan is a work in progress, uh we we have some work to do yet in that area. Uh our leaders worked with tight parameters this year, uh one thing we consistently say is that we can't, we can't decline an enrollment and grow in staffing, it's just a recipe that's not gonna work for us as a school district, so. Um I just, I gotta compliment our leaders, I think they did really well, and what you see in those requests is a reflections of what the needs are. And consistently, we have not been able to provide all of the needs to all of our building levels and departments and that's unfortunate, I think, actually. Um and were you in in this planning, we're also using uh the second year of our three-year operational referendum. Fund twenty-seven, our special ed fund, uh revenues and expenses are balanced. Thirty-nine, our debt service account, uh the levy the levy amount and bond payments, those are all based on a repayment schedule from the referendum in two thousand eighteen. Just factoring in what that payment and revenue will be for the next fiscal year. Our food service fund, fund fifty, is also balanced. Fund seventy-three, our post-employment benefit trust, uh is a reflection of what we expect for projected activity, excuse me, throughout that fund. Fund eighty, our community service fund, uh again, just a reflection of what our our community service programs are. Uh just to come back to assumptions and inputs, all of these are projected, obviously, um we're we're looking to uh en- enrollment. Our September count will be taken on September nineteenth, our state aid figure will we will receive on October fifteenth. Property values we receive on October first, so we'll be able to set our tax levy after October fifteenth, uh when that state aid figure is is known. Again, wage increases and level movements for staff, compensation study, uh any adjustments to health insurance. We'll know more uh as we complete our third fiscal quarter here at the end of March and we head into fourth quarter. Uh I had mentioned in January, uh things were trending high, that trend is continuing, uh so it's something we're definitely uh working hard to address here. Uh as we head to a renewal time. Right now, uh even though we're heading into a biennial budget, uh this 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 assumption model assumes a three hundred and twenty-five dollar per pupil revenue limit increase, that's current law. We're hoping for something much different and better than that, uh but in all likelihood, I I don't think we're gonna see a a final budget. Probably until later in the fall. Maybe we'll get surprised and it'll go faster than that, but uh that would really surprise me. And I'll add two grant numbers or estimates, uh and I would say that I think we're a little less firm uh than we ever have been related to federal funding. That's something that we keep an eye on daily, uh not exaggerating there, it seems like new information comes over every day, but. We're less worried about funding than we are about services.
Based on our current sources right now, it looks like the funding's gonna be maintained for the majority of programs that we have, our special. It doesn't look like our special ed funding's gonna be impacted and it doesn't look like our title funds will be impacted, which is most important to us are the Title I funds. It still looks like that uh Title II and Title IV are on the chopping block this way. But it, based on communication that Secretary McMahon put out personally, uh that Title I and special ed definitely won't be affected. And even may mention there might be increases in that area because all the savings that they're gonna get on laying off all the people in the DOE.
Well, we'll keep an eye on that as it continues to develop, but uh if it's not obvious, there are some challenges here, uh many of which you've you've heard before. But enrollment, we know that our lower grades are trending lower, uh I mentioned loss of ESAR funding, I just have to add how inadequately backfilled uh that amount of money was. We're in year t- we're you we're in year two of the three-year operational referendum, so something that uh is intricate, I guess, as we navigate the next two-year biennium. Seeing what the outcome of that is and whether or not referendum support would be needed beyond that period of time. I mentioned the state budget, uh but our charge is to work within our available revenues, our limits and capacities. So our intention is to come back to you with a balanced budget recommendation in April.
I would like to, you back off what Chad just said, and Chad, if you would, could you go back to the revenue limit worksheet?
Uh Angela might be able to get the.
Five or six, wasn't it?
It's a page.
Page seven.
Page nine on the computer, seven on the report sheet.
Number nine.
Uh one of the key things that I think the board needs to be aware of, if you look at ten H and I and the private school voucher aid deductions. And what those amounts right now are at, uh you know, one of the things that is being proposed at the state level right now is to change how. That voucher system works and separating it out and creating a separate fund specifically for private and voucher schools. As board members, I would ask you that as more is done in that work, if you would be advocates for that, I know I would appreciate it, and Chad, have you got anything else on that?
Yeah, I mean, it's something that I think is confusing for people, so it it comes out of our revenue limit, but we're allowed to levy for it, so it is a direct tax impact. We wish there was a different way that it was done, there's been mention of decoupling that funding, there are pros and cons to all of that, but. I guess ultimately, just not having it run through the public school system probably makes the most sense.
I do have one question, if if say next year we run out of the, we spend the rest of the referendum money for operational costs. What are we gonna have to cut if nothing else changes to maintain a balanced budget for the following year?
That's two years down the road.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
The equivalent of at least that two and a half million dollars of referendum money, probably plus some inflationary factors, depending on what happens with the.
This next budget will be a very telling budget.
It's a big, it's a big one for us.
They're having their operational.
They had one last fall, I don't know if there's another one on the horizon, but.
Board members have any additional questions for Mr. Trowbridge? Alright, thank you for your presentation, both of you. Next, we have ten point oh two, elementary attendance boundary review update.
Yes, uh the board was provided with a document uh found within your board packet that uh was able to. Cover a lot of information in a very precise manner, since your last board meeting, the there have been. Meetings five and six with EBRC plus public session number two. During the course of all these meetings that have taken place, I, you know, after my medical leave absence, I have learned quite a bit. Uh some of the comments that were made in regard to elementary attendance boundaries were not lost on me, they weren't lost on Mr. Trowbridge. And the EBRC has been very diligent in and taking consideration, public input, whether it was from public session number one or public session number two. Uh you know, the committee has been very conscientious in their approach to studying the uh information that's being provided. I get that, the EBRC is working hard in making decisions that would be in the best interest of the district. Uh I would also say that the EBRC is quite conscious of the fact that, to their points, it's a heart-wrenching process, you know. Nobody, I have met no one in the EBRC that is does not have a heart and, you know, but it is difficult decision-making. One thing that the board, I would like to alert you to, is during the course of all that work, the EBRC has reached a conclusion that. At no point right now, at this juncture for the district, uh are we at a point of closing any school in the district. Any other rumors that might be spread on social media, I can tell you without a doubt, the EBRC will not be bringing a recommendation. Recommendation to close any schools based on what I currently know. And um again, it is quite um taxing work on the individuals involved. They have the best interest of the district in mind in many, many regards, but it's a hard thing to do. Uh one of the things for me, I know that in two thousand and five, when the district was addressing elementary in this boundaries, it was in a. Place of growth, uh in my previous experience in my other district, we were a district in a place of growth. Uh this experience for me has taught me a lot, it's different when you're addressing declining enrollment versus growth. And I'm I'm learning quite a bit through the process, but the work that's being done. I appreciate greatly the direction that the board gave us, gave the EBRC and Chad and I as co-facilitators. And based on the outcome of last night's meeting with EBRC members, we will be bringing you a singular plan. But we'll be looking to explain how the committee reached the decision that it will ultimately reach. And if Mr. Olson, who was able to attend last night, has anything further to add on where as a. The board members that are on the committee are non-voting members, like Chad and I are non-voting members, so we're there purely in an observational role and, you know, just to see the process. Do you, any takeaways from last night?
I commend them, um they are, they they take this personal and, you know, it's third, you know, you think about when you add a group of thirty or forty people that. You know, it's, but the process has been such, they all feel ownership in this, and you will, at one point, they asked me if they could bring. Two or three proposals to the board to discuss, and I said, not a chance. Um because, you know, they're they're struggling with this and the reason they're struggling is because they care. And it's a good cross-section, you know, administrators, um principals, PTO people. And just general public, um and and some teachers and stuff, so you are getting, the proposal you get will be representative of our community. And. It it keeps getting modified too, so you know, you're probably gonna get a phased-in approach, I'm assuming it's something in that order. What I would tell you too, when we get the. What I would tell you too, when we get the proposal, what you, you have to think about what is best for the students, like we always do as a board, for class size and for staff. And I know that, um, like I said, with the ownership that everybody has for their schools and stuff, you know, th- this is going to be a difficult decision, but at the end of the day, it's gonna be about the kids and what can we do, but, you know, I commend for what they're doing, that was another two and a half hours last night, and I don't know, you know, how many hours they've racked up as a, as a board, they're probably in the fifteen to twenty hours that they put into this. It's amazing how they all, you know, when we look at the, the maps of the just, the different boundary maps, everybody knows, well, what if we just take the west end of fifty-three on, on num- boundary number one, and everybody's going, oh, yeah, well, let's take a look at that, so they've all done their due diligence, they all care, and, um, like I said, we're, they'll bring it, so when you do get our proposal, really what you're gonna decide is either we accept it or we don't accept it, it comes down to that. I think that pretty much sums up what, what I've been seeing, so Peggy and I have been piggybacking a little bit on this, so, but it is, um, I'm honored to be part of this, just to see the commitment of these people, like I said, but we're not voting and we're there to listen, so once in a while, they'll ask a question as far as what the board feels, but ninety-nine percent of the time, they're discussing this and we're just sitting there watching.
Anything else?
No, that was good.
All right, um, board members have any other questions regarding the elementary attendance boundary review update? All right, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Holmes. Next is ten-point-oh-three, discussion of board activities. Uh, March fourteenth was copy and comment. That was at Matt, would like to speak about that? Is anybody at that?
Kathy.
Kathy, we can still count Kathy.
I think she was actually.
Kathy was gone too?
Never mind.
Kathy was gone too, okay. March twentieth, board learning walk at the Cardinal Transition Academy, anybody attend that?
Yeah, Sarah and I were there, it was, we had a great turnout for, um, community people, and it was good because there was well, the chamber was represented there, and, you know, a couple of the nonprofits that use the transitional students coming out were there, Goodwill and some other people, and it was great that they could see what the transitional people do, it's that last step for a student eighteen to twenty-one years old to try to get them that last over-the-hump as far as transitioning into the, a working place, so it was, it was very good.
And each of the students, um, put together a slide and, you know, did some presentations, so it was very cool. And remember, all these kids are kids with IEPs, you know, who have had that extra support, you know, as they've gone through school, and it's so super cool to see them, they're gonna stand up, talk to these folks, and, um, working on their what next, so that they'll be valuable ones of our communities.
Excellent. All right, anybody else, any comments on that? All right, March twenty-fourth, business after hours, who was it that went to that? Anybody? I was gonna ask somebody to tell me what that means, does that mean like after nine PM or ten, or what is, I mean?
Five o'clock.
It's early.
You probably don't remember.
Nine, ten o'clock. Once.
All right, well, so, nobody went to that?
Okay.
Next is a discussion of meeting, board members have any questions or comments that they wanna make regarding the meeting that we had tonight? Usually, we don't get very many comments on that. Eleven-point-oh-two, future, uh, agenda items and upcoming events. Uh, we have the Go Right Way grand opening, that is gonna be March twenty-six at eleven AM.
That's tomorrow, isn't it?
It is, that is tomorrow. At five-ten South Avenue. April first is the spring election, there are three school board seats, uh, for people running. April second at six PM is the special board meeting for the EBRC recommendation. April twenty-eighth is a board learning walk, uh, human resources at Corder Chesna, April twenty-eighth is also our reorganizational meeting and our regular monthly board meeting. April thirtieth is our board governance, learning, and sharing workshop at Forest Area High School. Registration for that is required, so, yes, you contact Angela to RSVP. May seventh is the Excellence in Education banquet at Lake Wasota Golf and Events, registration is also required for that, so please RSVP to Angela. And May eighth is the Chippewa Falls, uh, School District Retirement Party, and that's gonna be at Market on River this year, and again, respond to Angela if you would like to attend that. Uh, I know this takes us out a little bit in some respects, is there anything going out into the next month or two that is missing from here that a board member would like to add? Do we have any exciting activities, any band, uh, or sometimes we don't have?
There's a choir, band, and orchestra concert on Thursday at seven.
Thursday at seven?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, any board members?
And I'm just gonna do a plug, Harmonix had the best season they probably ever had, they came in first runner-up, but, you know, and I don't think they've ever placed that high, they had a really good season.
That's pretty impressive. All right, twelve-point-oh-one is motion to adjourn, board member like to make such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by McKillop, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark, no further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we stand adjourned at eight forty PM, thank you all.
And I already told you about that, you know, four.